President.
Counselor Pogrias.
Present.
Counselor Gardner.
Present. I could ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands on the nation under our individual rights and justice for all. At this time of meeting, there's a public hearing in accordance nineteen oh nine, which is the initial appropriation. I will open the meeting, open the fort for the public hearing on order nineteen oh nine. Is there only here like to speak on the public hearing on order nineteen oh nine?
Yeah, well, I'm thinking of something else.
Then that will be done right after we close the public hearing in the public comments section. Okay, very good. Any one here to speak on the public hearing for the additional appropriation? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting, that public hearing on order nineteen oh nine. Now I will open up the public comment. Kindly ask that all public comments is limited to two minutes, my apologies, or five minutes for who's spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are raised to the council, you will note your questions in the meeting minutes and refer these questions to the appropriate department or staff or follow up. Public comments may also be submitted electronically to our town manager, Dustin Anderson, and D Anderson at monster.org. Sir, and if you if you could just state your name and your address and then you can get in your comments. Okay, please.
I live at eighty four forty five. Commander Avenue. It has struck me the attention of war that the sound barriers are not going to go all the way from Fisher up to Ridge Road. And I think most people don't know what I happened to find out from a private email to from the N I T C D. So we are concerned that the sound barriers aren't going to go between the train and the east side of the Renaissance buildings, which are eighty four forty five and eighty four twenty one. And originally, we were promised them in the meeting for over two years ago, when we laid out the entire plan. So I'm concerned about what happened and how do I want to know how to get this back to them. And I've also been in contact with Wendy, who has started looking into this. The bottom line is I'm concerned about home values because of the noise if we don't have the sound.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council during the public comment section?
I can move eighteen thirty three to a plane. Question is, is there any plans on repainting the bike lanes on White Oak between Bridge Road and Framlin and on Framlin between, say, Calumet and Forty Fifth? Because your town does a better job on the white paint that's not there.
Other questions, Mike?
That's it.
Okay, so that's a question since we have an assistant town or deputy town manager is ready to answer that question. Feel free to answer that question.
We will be, we will most likely be re-striping all of the striping that we missed last year. So we did some striping last year in the fall, but we couldn't get through the whole town, and I'm sure that's on the list for next year, and if it is, or for this year, and if it isn't, we'll we'll add it.
Mike, just so we can clarify your addresses, send those in the email so we know which streets, because you lost me, you named those streets off too quick.
Oh, yeah, I know which one.
Okay, very good. Other comments, other people here that would like to speak to the council during the public comments section of the meeting? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda. Okay, there's a motion and second, is there any comments with regards to the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Then we move into old business. This is the second reading for orders number nineteen oh nine, which we had a previous public hearing on. There's a recommended action in the board jacket. Move to improve and reduce our then nineteen oh nine.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, second any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving into the new business. Item I renew reconnect, reimagine Ridge Road. Tom Andrew Anderson would like to give a brief overview or update the council.
Sure, at the May fifteenth meeting, you authorized staff to negotiate with IEI on terms and conditions of an agreement. We have done so. That entire agreement is attached to the agenda this evening. It includes four appendices. Most important are probably appendix A, the scope of service to be to be furnished by the salt, and appendix D, the compensation to that consultant. As you mentioned in the work study before this, I would imagine most people in the room were there just a couple of minutes ago, but for the record, or if you tuned in on the Zoom meeting, this is the beginning of a very long project. Probably four hundred and forty plus days, and over the course of those days, there's going to be a significant undertaking of public engagement and design, looking at what is and what people need it to be. Meaning our stakeholders, our businesses, our public safety departments, our hospitals, making sure that this is a solution that works for everybody effectively. So this evening, we would ask that you, by motion and voice vote, authorize the contract between IEI and the town of Munster for design services for the renewed reconnect and reimagine which road project for a cost not to exceed. Let me find that number right here, one million nine hundred sixty two thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars. Now that is important to note that that is eighty percent reimbursable. So that is not one point nine million dollars that comes out of the town of Munsters funds. Twenty percent of that will, and those funds are for projects like this. They are not operation funds. We are not shorting any department's ability to continue to deliver outstanding services to the residents by entering into this contract or by exploring this possibility. These funds are specifically for capital improvements. So just to be clear on that as well, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Here is a recommendation from the council. I move we authorize the contract between I E I and town of Munster. Design services for the new, we connect the back and regular. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? We do have members of the design team here. If there are any questions that we want to direct to them.
Yes.
I I had a couple. I didn't want to take up the time during the work study. The first one is that you mentioned, and those that might have been here a couple months ago, when we authorized the design team to go ahead and start with the traffic study because of the bridge road projects that we're going to start, and we wanted to get this this project going. You, we had talked about the fact that the kids wouldn't be in school at the time, but I can't, I believe it was like June, so June that that week. And I believe that you had mentioned, like, using the, that we could get a count from the school as far as those that have parking passes and address. I don't know if that address, but parking passes, so we could, so we could look at that. But there was something that a resident brought up to me was that that wouldn't account for the numerous parents that drive to the high school and middle school. We do have a very, I I mean, I don't, I'm not going to say our buses definitely aren't full, but for that middle school and high school, there are many, many parents who
Drop offs.
To do drop offs. So I just wanted to make sure that I know you said that it wasn't just to be one pass of the traffic study, that there'd be more parts. So I just wanted to to make you aware of that.
So some good news and the good and school numbers that we have available to us in twenty twenty one. So we asked them that available numbers to supplement our track and we give that to you.
Okay.
And part of part of what we, one of the questions we do ask them, whether these schools are having drop offs, do you have, they know those numbers.
Okay.
They, they know how many students drop offs, parent drop offs they have on average. I've done quite a bit of school parking lot, school designs, I'm my own myself, so I'm fully aware. We've talked to schools about these things. That's why I'm fairly confident we can come up with a number two. They can generate the number and back into it to see if it matches the twenty twenty one.
Good, that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at that. And then the other thing is that when I'm listing, looking at the the scope of work and it has the task number one through ten. Just if anybody else is looking at this online, they, I just, I want to make sure that, so the public engagement and the stakeholder interviews are listed at seven. I like is the seventh that I, I don't know, you might be starting earlier, but if you could just describe that a little bit so that that because what it might be looking like.
Nestor.
Pardon me?
Describe the order.
No, 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 not just try the order, but if I'm, if I'm looking at this, I'm just, I'm a resident and I'm just looking, I'm curious, I might say, oh, well, they're going to bring us in closer to them. So what I have to say won't really matter. So I just want, if you could describe a little bit more how that public process and then also, you know, stakeholders as far as fire, leaves, etc. are involved.
Yeah, task seven, right? It's public engagement.
Yes.
It 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 would lead one, it would lead one to believe that.
Gotcha.
Right?
So no, these are just the the comments asked. So when we were asked to do this contract video, I'm just considering infrastructure, by the way, I didn't have it used. But so the test, these are just following in that skyline for the order, generally speaking. So click public engagement start day one. We have the same, I gotta mention before, we have the same people that did the study on our team, Tesca and Sam Schwartz. We're going to immediately open up the website that was the previous website, which opens up the public comment meeting. So that's number one in our, in our steps of interview to open up public engagement, which is day one.
Okay, good. I just wondered.
So it starts on day one and it will go through construction. This is like beyond us when it gets transferred to the members selected to do the construction inspection for the town. It will continue through them. We will pass on our information and they will continue with that process.
Okay, thank you.
Say, is your question?
It sure does.
How sort of other questions? How's it doing this?
You just mentioned that a public engagement will continue into or through construction. I think this might actually be the next item on the agenda, talking about the construction. But if I'm sitting here, I'm also curious, when are we going to start building and when is it likely to be done? Is there, I said we're pretty early, but is there any guidance?
So what I do is when we get to the study in this first hundred fifty days, so get the survey picked up, get the data from all the traffic at a question, which we got to start on. So thank you for that. That's going to help us move right into this process and get some preliminary alternatives laid out. Get to that process, have the meeting with town, go forward with their paper first election and go forward. The other thing you have to do is, I mentioned in the previous meeting, but the environmental process is the most stringent of the processes. We can, we can tell you what we think it's going to be if things go the way it's supposed to be. Sometimes they don't. Sometimes getting responses is just not what you think. I mean, he's working with the government agencies and stuff. They don't respond as quick as they say they will. They have timelines that are thirty days reviews, sometimes it's forty five, sometimes it's nine. It's out of our control at that point. But we have good control. We have best on things here. They have really good connections with federal highways. The one good thing is with this, we don't have the extra step of end up. Anyway, we go straight to federal highways. So we move the back of the career, but then that industry, federal, I think, for the little bit of review time can take down. But, you know, the section one six process that is part of historical study is a mental six. It's just going to take that long and then the back and forth there. And then that's kind of the beginning of the environmental needs of that. So. So we got to get through that. And so we can go to construction, but what we're, what we're going to intend to do is any effect of utility relocation, get that into as early as possible and get those contracts out. Utility relocation, get that out of the way. So that's the first goal. And then once that's out of the way, then we can release the contract forward, the overall construction, real construction. The next thing is to make it a little smoother, to make it happen faster. It's a pretty complicated, complex project. Probably won't get it done in one construction season. And maybe season and a half.
It's gonna be very broad strokes. Is it like twenty twenty five construction likely to begin and go over two seasons?
The goal will be get break ground in twenty twenty. But it's twenty.
Twenty three now.
Yeah, so the goal is to break ground.
Four hundred and forty days, they take us into twenty five and start.
And then we'll get it did in twenty five, and then maybe we can get an early start in twenty six. But it all really depends on the response on the above process.
Very good. Other counselors, questions? You mentioned briefly about utility relocation. Could you talk a little bit about some of the other items that might not be as fancy and as headline grabbing with stormwater, you know, you know, considerations and things like that, that really this is an infrastructure project also.
This, this stormwater is a big one. In this case, there are commitments that were made in the coastal grant to reduce the imperturbative area, find things and stuff. So there might be this one decision has to be made on street parking versus rain gardens in some areas and trying to figure that out. So how we handle this form water, will we reach our groundwater where we can? So if we have a green construction solution where possible. Those are things that we talked about the process and have to be deciding quickly because those things do impact your part of health. So there's things that we have to get on the agenda quickly and make decisions on.
And and the utility relocation, we're talking actually utility lines being moved away from right off the roadways.
From where the work would be. Yeah, so if it's not in conflict with the work, it doesn't have to be. But there are certain things that will be in conflict with work that will have to be relocated.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions?
I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. Oh, that's fine. Counselor Mellon.
It just, also, if I'm sitting in the audience, I'm thinking that the timelines. When you said twenty five, twenty six, and I'm pairing this with something from the work study that you said you take in trips to major, you know, like Walmarts or whatever. Everybody sees all the work going on Ridge Road. It has a lot to do with the train. And so the trains will be operational late twenty five, early twenty six is kind of the the timeline. So that puts the road construction, possibly whatever might be done at the same time. I assume you've taken into account like the trips to the train.
It'll be, it'll be considered.
It will be in the.
I mean, we haven't done yet.
But doing that dance.
I can, I can say that when Tesca and Sam Schwartz did the initial, they took the trip generation figures that Nick D used for their work with the Department of Transportation and accounted for that. So that, those might change, right? But so to Dustin's point, you'll get more new information, but in the initial that everyone's been working on, the Nick D numbers were in there.
Thank you. Okay, other questions? Then there is a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to item B, this is the revised raised grant agreement. There is a recommendation. The last two months, the town manager and staff has been working with the Office of Secretary of the United States Department of Transportation and the recommendation in front of us.
This is not materially different than what you looked at in May. There are some some revisions. Those revisions are line by line called out in the the attachments online, and you'll see most of them are contact information, accounting numbers for internal use. They shifted some bins of how money shall be spent, not the total amount of money. So what you conceptualize in your head, we're going to get X amount for this, that's all the same. But the kind of administrative and for the office of the secretary of transportation to administer this, they had some additional and different information that they wanted incorporated in this agreement.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Yes.
I move to authorize our manager to execute the agreement between the Office of the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Transportation and the town of Munster under award of seventeen million one hundred forty three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars to improve one point three miles of bridge road.
There was a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes.
There was one of the changes that was either changing the period of performance in the window that closed in twenty thirty one that ended twenty twenty seven. Is it accurate to think of the period of performance of when the work is being done?
I have never been, and I don't think anybody in this room has ever been a direct recipient of federal funds. I can tell you with an end out project, you have to have it committed. You like, so you, we would have to do this step by twenty seven, right? I don't know for sure if that means we have to be driving on the completed red road by twenty seven. I think there's a fair question. It seems awfully aggressive to me. Okay, thanks, Justin. Okay. There's two different dates in the contract, one for commitment and one for completion. So.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions regarding the the motion that's on the on the floor? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to item C, the East Forty Fifth Street paving bid award. Deputy Tom Manager, anything to add to your memo?
Um, I'll just summarize for our audience behind us here that we opened bids for paving of East Forty Fifth Street on Tuesday of last week. The work will be from Southwood Drive to the Thailand Town Line, and it's, this project is going to consist of just a surface mill and overlay of two inches. And we have, we received two bids. The low bidder was Milestone Contractors. And we're recommending that you approve a word of the contract to them so they can be start started and get it done before the fall.
Very good. There's a recommendation in front of the council?
Mr. President, I move to award Milestone Contract Inc. The contract for the twenty twenty three East Forty Fifth Street repaving project at their bid price of five hundred fifty five thousand five dollars and a cent.
Second, very good. There's a motion, second, any discussion?
This is the one that you completed this season.
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Letter D, Grand Prairie Wetland Mitigation Continuation for Continuing Monitoring and Maintenance. There is a memo from Tom Andrew, Dustin Anderson. Anything to add to the memo?
I would ask that we move this tableless item and move it two weeks. There was a discrepancy between the two documents that Stan Tech gave us for the price of the work proposed. One was for seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, one was for nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and I have called the project manager to have an explanation and some updated documents. I have not received an explanation nor updated documents, and I don't think it would be wise to rush this, just for two thousand dollars. The wetlands will be there and they will be mitigated and monitored all the same.
Very good. Then I will entertain a motion to table this item.
Mr. President.
Do we have to?
Mr. President, I, I have heard that we tabled item D, Grand Prairie Wetlands mitigation, continuing monitoring, and that's to our next meeting.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Letter E, Nick D, Wesley Corridor Project Invoice Number forty forty three. Deputy Tom Andrew, James Moss, anything to add to this?
Yeah, this is for work, well, it's for the period of May of twenty twenty three. Our projects, the town betterment projects with the Nick D project didn't see any additional work being done, but the contract with the joint venture is written so that when they reach their their fifty percent mark for the whole project, the retainage reduces from ten percent to five percent. So this is just paying half of the retainage that we've been holding back to them.
I want to do without the rise of payment of the invoice number forty forty three to Nick D in amount of one hundred sixty thousand five hundred forty two dollars and fifty four cents of the tip. A hundred, a hundred and six dollars?
I think just to certify, a hundred, a hundred and six thousand. Very good. There's a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda, letter F, Police Department authorizes the purchase of four new vehicles. I don't see anybody here. Oh, chief is here. Chief, anything to add to your memo?
Uh, no, not really. Just, it's just authorization to go ahead and seek bids for the four vehicles.
I would just, the clarifications in the memo, it says four Ford interceptors, but it said four and in parentheses says three. You're looking for three of those four interceptors?
And I'm glad you brought that up. There's actually two. Two of them are in.
You updated now. Okay, I'm sorry, what the?
Two are interceptors and two are Ford F one fifty police. I don't know if you want to refer to them as interceptors, but they're pickup trucks.
Thanks for the clarification. I meant to. Okay, Mr. President, I move that we authorize the police department to open the purchasing process for the new police vehicles. I'll second. There's more, second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yeah.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Surplus equipment and letter G, this is from the town manager's office, disposal surplus equipment. There's a recommendation from the council.
I second the motion.
There's a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
For the benefit of the public, it is a server that hasn't run in six years, so.
Very good. Next on the agenda, letter H, the twenty twenty two dash one C C M G, change order number one. And it seems like this is a change order they would like to see, but Deputy Tom Andrew, anything to add to this?
This is our first paving project of the C C M G cycle for twenty twenty three, and it was completed in June. So when we're all done, we balance all the quantities and we are left with a a net decrease to the contract.
Mr. President, it's my great joy to move to approve the change order number one for a net decrease of sixteen thousand sixteen dollars and cents to the contract for twenty twenty two dash one C C M G roadway and waterman. Offered, sacred stress with them.
Second, there's a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Last, I mean, under new businesses, change order for studio access, relatively small additional payment, but fire chief, Mike, I do get to add to this one. Mark's in the back of this.
Well, the reasons and the changes we have for another option.
Thank you. Thank you. There's a recommenda- recommended action from the council.
I move to authorize an additional payment to studio access of three hundred seventy nine dollars.
Second, motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulewitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Pogrias.
Yeah.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Under reports, there is a NERC C issued twenty fifty report. The most important part is, you know, what our NERC C represented, what treasure miss handled this item on the agenda.
I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that after every four years, NERC C, which is the Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission, they update their plan. The plan is four hundred and some odd pages. It's a nice, easy read for everyone, but it is available on the NERC C website. And it, it has to do with our whole region, three three counties, and it deals with active transportation, climate and environment, great land use, roads and transit. And all these things combined is a broad picture and then the plan that we're doing, how does that all fit in here? So it's pretty interesting information, and we just recommend it. Go to the NERC C website.
Thank you for that update. Any other reports, any other? Uh any other reports, any portfolio reports for the council?
Yes, um thank you, I have, uh so not when I report on all the time, but the um I'm the appointment for the RDA's TVD Steering Committee and that uh we need quarterly to discuss or to get updates on the Westlake uh corridor project, which is the intention in the South Shore Train Line. And so our our last meeting was May sixteen. And at that time, um we were informed, there's one person from each uh town or city that is impacted, that will be impacted by the train uh and its possible um transit for human development. And at that time, we were informed that the uh the consulting group that had been hired or that was hired by the RDA to help all the towns and cities um learn of what they could do to most benefit from the train's extension, that's MKSK. They had um they mentioned that they had sent out uh some strategic uh implementation plans to all of the towns that already have their boundary set. And so we received that in May and um we still need to make comments on those, we need to work through those and get back to them because they want to, they want to uh put that on the website for everyone to see. So we're still in need of a work study. Our next meeting for the steering committee is August seventeen, August sixteen, August sixteen. Um and we probably, we may not have everything for them then, but we need to, this is, there's a lot of information. And so the uh people attending the meeting, you know, when this is, it's it's looking at all of the areas for redevelopment or new development. So like that big plot of land that is by the train station, um the dire Munster train station that will be at the end of Main Street. So there's also like the South End and West Lakes, there's like thirty eight and a half acres there. So MKSK has a plan, they want us to weigh in on it, like their current, their suggestion, yes, shows like five hundred and fifty new residents in there with a mixture of multifamily, town homes, et cetera. So I think we need to have a work study very soon and the public needs to be part of this um sooner than later. So I'm just requesting that the councils uh that we schedule that one within the next five.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um we will send out an internal email and find out what days are good for that. Thank you. Other comments or uh reports from the council? Seeing none, uh our final announcement tonight, our our next council meeting is August twenty first. It is at seven PM, that is the regular town council meeting and the regular redevelopment commission that will follow. Uh seeing all the business, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, motions in the second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will quickly move into our redevelopment commission meeting and uh and we see how we see, John.
Mr. Castro, how you doing? Great, I had perfect timing.
Yeah, that's good. I I will call the redevelopment commission regular meeting on August seventh, order. Uh roll call please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Excuse me. Commissioner Tulewitzky.
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
And our liaison to the school board, Mr. John, yes, from the C.
Yes, you are. Very good, uh is there any public here that would like to speak to the council, uh you know, not to the re- the commission, on the redevelopment commission? Seeing none, we'll close that item uh on the agenda, we'll move into the consent agenda. I move to accept the consent agenda. I'll say, there's a motion, a second, any discussion with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. And I do not see any old business, you know, new business or reports or announcements, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. The second, motion, a second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh motion carried, that meeting is adjourned and uh thank you everybody for coming and we're not here. Thank you.